Minutes. Please take your seats. Again, the school board meeting will begin in two minutes. The school board meeting will begin in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board meeting will begin in one minute.
Good Tuesday evening, everyone. The October 26th, 2021 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. Vice Chair King, would you please read our commitment statement, please?
I sure will. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting that everyone in the audience please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Don Browning, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the inspiration and pledge, which I know is going to be very inspiring tonight. Ms. Heather Lapira, Principal of Saddlewood Elementary School, please introduce your students who will be sharing their arts for all projects.
Okay, Ms. Beck is going to also introduce a little bit-
Fantastic.
...of the projects, and then I'll introduce my students.
All right. Good evening, Board Chair Thrower, Vice Chair King, Board members, Dr. Gullett, Mr. Powers, and Ms. Martinez Lopez. It is our pleasure this evening to showcase some of the great work going on in our elementary schools this year. We have two students from Saddlewood Elementary School, and Ms. Lapira will be introducing them in just a minute, who are showcasing some projects that they completed on Hispanic Champions. This is an excellent opportunity for you to really get a chance to see some of the projects and the work going on. You'll hear from a fourth grader who's going to be showcasing a famous baseball player. You'll also get the opportunity to hear an essay written by a fifth grader. This fifth grader submitted her work to First Lady Casey DeSantis's Student Essay Contest in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month. This contest was open to all 4th through 12th graders in the state of Florida, and the theme this year was celebrating Hispanic-American community leaders and champions. And we just have so many great things going on in our schools that tonight, here are two perfect examples of that. And joining me is Ms. Lapira, and she's going to do the introductions.
Thank you for allowing us to share our students tonight. I am going to introduce first is Giancarlo Colon Alvarez. He's been with me since he was in kindergarten, right? Come on up. And he is our fourth grader, and he's going to read his essay, and then we're going to showcase his board right here.
Would you have him come over to this side?
Yeah, come here. You're a lot shorter.
Okay, be a microphone you can speak into.
Ready? You're going to do great. Okay.
Roberto Clemente was born in August 18, 1934, in Carolina, Puerto Rico. He is considered one of Puerto Rico's idols because he was the first black Latino to make a big difference in the game by helping with the successful integration of Latino players. He had major achievements, including MVPs, Golden Glove Awards, reaching 3,000 career hits, and helping his team to championships. Clemente was the first Latino to win the World Series, to be inducted into the National Hall of Fame, and he was considered to be a humanitarian. He built a sports city for children to keep them safe of drugs and crime. His life quote was, "If you have the opportunity to make a difference in this world and you don't, then you are wasting your time on this earth." In fact, Roberto Clemente died December 31st, 1972, in a plane crash while providing supplies and help to the victims of an earthquake in Nicaragua. If he needed, if he would have lived longer, he would have been even greater than he was. As a fact, Roberto Clemente was enlisted in the United States Marine Corps Reserve for six years.
Great job.
Fantastic.
So let me- Great job. So the teacher, we didn't require this for our students, so the teacher actually gave them the opportunity to complete this if they wanted to. So this took a lot of work on his part, and he did this, and it was an optional project, correct? And he got to do it any way he wanted to. So this is what he chose to do. So we're very proud of him and all the hard work that you put into that. So good job.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Okay, so next is one of our amazing fifth graders. This is Sophia Hallam, better known as Sophie, and she's one of our fifth grade safety patrols as well. And she decided to write her essay, and then this is going to be submitted, it was submitted to Casey DeSantis. So she actually entered into the scholarship. Ready? You want us over here? Or you want to hear? Okay, go ahead.
Gloria Esteban is a Cuban-American singer that has won many awards since coming to America. As stated in Conga Age and Accident Biography, Gloria was born in Havana, Cuba, on September 1st, 1957, named Gloria Fardro. She came to the United States when she was a young girl. While in high school, she sang and played guitar as an outlet. She had a rough childhood. While in high school, a local band invited her to sing. The bandleader, Emilio Esteban, was so impressed with her talent that they invited her to join the band. The band became the Miami Sound Machine. Soon after joining the band, Gloria and Emilio were married. After several years with the band, she got an opportunity to begin her solo career. Some of her most famous songs include Conga, Rhythm is Going to Get You, and Samba. While touring, she was in a bus accident and had to undergo physical therapy to be able to tour again. Gloria Esteban became known as the Queen of Latin Pop. Not only was Gloria a singer, but she was also an author. She released two children's books, a cookbook, and wrote a musical, and appeared on American Idol. Although Gloria Esteban is a famous, she also a philanthropist. As defined by Webster's Dictionary, a philanthropist is a person who seeks to promote the welfare of others by the generous donation of money of good causes. Gloria Esteban and her husband have served as the chairperson for capital campaign raising money to build Royce Pope Life Center geared at curing paralysis. They have also created the Gloria Esteban Foundation, which promotes good health, education, and crucial development. Gloria Esteban's foundation had made donations to the Miami Dade College Foundation. He has helped the Humane Society of Greater Miami and his house Children's Home. Esteban and her family are also huge supporters of the arts and public schools. They joined with JetBlue, VH1's Save the Music Foundation, to donate $56 million in musical instruments to over 2,000 public schools. Gloria Esteban gives to others in need. Through her many charities, she has helped many people. Gloria and Emilio Esteban were honored by the President Obama with the Presidential Medal of Freedom, the nation's highest civil and honor. To receive the Presidential Medal of Freedom, you must make contributions to the interests of the United States as a whole. Gloria Esteban has made many achievements through her life. She should be recognized not just for her music, but for everything she has done for others.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you for highlighting them today. I appreciate it. Have a great evening.
Beautiful job. Beautiful job. Would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Yeah, bring them back.
Pledge, too. How exciting. Ready?
Let everyone stand, please.
Come here. Ready? Guys, ready? Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Ms. Hallam and Mr. Alvarez Colon, if you would just stay right up here for a minute, because we would like to give you some compliments.
Ready?
Ready? Okay. You almost got away. On behalf of the whole school board, we just want to thank you for coming before us this evening. It is the most fun when we get to see our students. And both of you spoke really powerful words, and you read them so beautifully. And to know so much already about Roberto Clemente and Gloria Esteban and their contributions as your heroes is really, really special and shows how smart you are. So keep up the great work, and I bet you have very proud families and great teachers that are going to continue to cheer you on, as well as a really good principal, right? Okay. One more round of applause. Go forth and continue being great. That was wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Lapira. That was so good. Dr. Gullett, you have some principals in schools you would like to recognize. Please introduce these individuals at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Always hard to follow our wonderful students, but we have some amazing principals to recognize that are helping to support this, our students in our schools. And so I'm going to ask them to come in. Mr. Christian, I think is going to go get them. So as you know, we went through a full year of the pandemic, and prior to that time, we had several months of students that were home without instruction in our building. And so a remarkably challenging time. Our team, as I've shared from the beginning, has worked really hard to ensure that we've not used that as an excuse, and that they have taken advantage of every minute that our children have that they don't get to do over again, regardless of the pandemic. Every minute counts in the lives of our students, and education doesn't pause. And so as the principals are coming in, what I want to do tonight, and it is my great pleasure, to introduce these principals to you, that not only did they work hard during the pandemic last year, and this is based on data from last year, but they thrived. And so these principals I'm going to share from these schools had improvement. Their schools actually had grade improvement during the pandemic, which is absolutely remarkable. So I'm going to go ahead, and if they just want to step forward, look, they're all in the corner. Everybody's socially distancing. They're always following the rules. But if they could just step forward so that the board can recognize them for their exemplary work in leading their teams for our students. Ashley Kemp, who was the principal at Evergreen Elementary. Rob- Okay, yep. Rob Hensel, Harborview Elementary. Kathy Bayless from Oak Crest Elementary. And Chris Sandy is here as well. She is supporting Oak Crest this year. Deb Riedel from Shady Hill Elementary. And last but not least, Gay Street from Spar Elementary. So again, remarkable improvement that not only, and all of our team does a remarkable job of working hard every day, but to have their schools show improvement at a time of pandemic is just to be commended. And so I want to say, on behalf of our entire district, thank you for all of your leadership, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And please don't step out quite yet. I know it's tempting, but we would be remiss, as a whole board, not to thank each and every one of you personally for your vision, your commitment, your willingness to do what you do, and it's such a high level. And not to mention the fact that we have two school leaders here that led their schools out of external operation and just turnaround status. Not only did you do a wonderful service to the community and, of course, the children, but also to taxpayers. So thank you very much for making that happen as a citizen. And to the rest of you, please keep shining your light, share your knowledge with all of your colleagues. I know that it's important to do that and continue to learn from each other. And please stay.
In the district. She doesn't mean tonight.
You don't get to go anywhere for a very long time. But again, thank you so much for taking the time after a long day to come and see us, so we can acknowledge you and celebrate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're off to a flying start. All right. Superintendent Gullett.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. I recommend approval of the agenda for the October 26th, 2021 school board meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of the following items. C 6.1, C 7.1, C 8.1, C 9.1, C 10.1, C 11.1, C 12.1, C 14.2, C 14.4, C 15.1, and C 15.2 that have been pulled and placed under discussion, and also item C 17.7 has been withdrawn completely. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
移到 Move.
Moved by Board Member Campbell, seconded by Board Member Cummings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 5th, 2021 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
移到
Moved by Vice Chair King. Seconded by Board Member Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 10th, 2021 School Board Meeting?
移到
Moved by Board Member Campbell.
移
Seconded by Board Member Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 12th, 2021 Special Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
移到
Move.
Moved by Board Member Campbell.
You can have him.
Campbell, seconded by Board Member Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 16th, 2021 Emergency School Board Meeting?
移到
Move. 移
Moved by Vice Chair King, seconded by Board Member Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 19th, 2021 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
移
Moved by Board Member Cummings.
移
Seconded by Vice Chair King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the board tonight. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Thrower. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrator or staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are strictly prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Chair, that includes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez Lopez, how many speakers do we have tonight?
We have two, Madam Chair.
Two. All right. Excellent.
Mr. Altobello?
Good evening. Chris Altobello, A-L-T-O-B-E-L-L-O, 2020, Northeast 43rd Street, Ocala, Florida. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. Dr. Gullett, Mr. Browning, congratulations on your recent appointment. I have the pleasure of representing both instructional and non-instructional staff in my work capacity as Executive Director of the MEA and MESP. But I also have two children that attend public school right across the street. I'm here tonight to speak regarding the most recent work session where you collectively decided to eliminate the employee COVID leave provision in your board resolution per the recommendation of the executive cabinet. Must say that many of my colleagues in my same position across the state envied our COVID leave provisions that we were able to employ here in Marion County. The employees I represent work in classrooms and other spaces that have anywhere from 15 to 30 children for up to eight hours a day, classrooms that were never equipped to maintain social distancing, and often with subpar or in some cases, no ventilation. Some of our ESPs cover multiple classrooms each day, increasing their exposure. In fact, the MEA had to intervene on behalf of staff at North Marion Middle School this year to expedite the ordering of portable AC units because there was no air conditioning in areas of the school. My members were purchasing fans to keep cool and aid with circulation. I'm told the problem still exists, and this is just one school that we know of. Many of our classrooms don't even have windows to help with circulation. And I haven't even mentioned the other employees, like our bus drivers and aides who transport children for hours on end in tightly confined spaces. I would imagine that the cabinet people who recommended this elimination are not privileged to work in these environments on a daily basis. But let's go back to the COVID leave. The MEA, MESP, and IUPAT unions represent those that will directly be affected by your decision, but we were never afforded an opportunity to discuss this change. You admit the cases are way down. That is a good sign, as it means COVID leave cases should also be coming down. But we should not, this should not lead to the elimination of such a provision. COVID is still out there, and even if you decide to eliminate COVID leave, why would you mandate that the 10 days of uncompensative leave that you talked about only apply after exhausting all personal leave? If Marion County public schools are so compassionate and generous, why not give employees the option to choose when to use the uncompensative leave? This way, they can protect their accrued leave when they might need it after the pandemic. I'm sure there are other avenues we can explore instead of basically gutting the entire resolution. Again, we are talking about only those with COVID-related and documented cases which you admit are in decline. And if cost is a factor, as was discussed, I'm sure our award-winning finance department will utilize provisions within the ESER assurances to recoup any costs associated with COVID. It is both permissible and expected. You know, I've been keeping a log of posted vacancies since the start of school. It's quite astonishing to me that in a school district which on any given day has hundreds of vacancies, vacancies, by the way, that increase class size, limit whatever social distancing might be possible, and create undue burden and stress, it's astonishing that we're sending this message to our employees. You spent an hour last week deciding to eliminate COVID protections as if our schools and staff have returned to a state of normalcy, when in fact, we are far from it. And you did so last week while laughing and giggling at times during the discussion, using terms as "well taken care of," "generous," "compassionate," "credibility with employees." And you even wiped down the podium after one of the speakers while you were discussing eliminating COVID leave. We should be workshopping on how we can recruit and retain employees rather than eliminate a health and safety provision while we're still in a pandemic. Earlier this month, you topped 300 posted vacancies on your job line. Your employees are drowning right now. COVID leave acts as a life preserver to some. What they need you to do is focus on how we can give them as much support as possible, not to overwhelmingly approve the elimination of a provision that supports those in a health crisis, a provision that seems to be phasing itself out. My children, Maddie and Tony, are blessed to have wonderful teachers, support professionals and administrators that enable them to succeed every day at school. Marion County public schools should reaffirm this one provision of support for staff across the district, for if it were not for your thousands of employees, children like Maddie and Tony would not be receiving the high-quality instruction they benefit from each day. I ask that you reject the recommendation of the executive cabinet and continue the COVID leave protections while exploring other options.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Okay. I will see you on November 1st.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Gary White?
Hello, I'm Gary White, 9280 Southwest 96th Court Road, Ocala, Florida, 34481. I would like to start out by asking everybody to go to DrArtist.com, the Dr. Artist Show. He gives you all sorts of good things to take. I've been here before, talking about ivermectin, about hydroxychloroquine, taking 12 milligrams of ivermectin once a week is an excellent prophylaxis. Hydroxychloroquine, 300 milligram, once a week is an excellent prophylaxis. It is just amazing that the cure is here and we've been had. The government, the media, and the politicians have ate us up, and the cure was here, ivermectin was here, April 15th of 2020, and it was a cure. As a matter of fact, if you go to H-I-N-N-I-H.gov, Table 2, the second treatment for COVID is ivermectin. Free doctors, you can get ivermectin from MyFreeDoctors.com. The Hathaway, Hathaway on 17th Street has compounds of ivermectin, and you can get it there. There is no reason to even suffer. The one thing the doctor will tell you is, don't go to the hospital. Don't go to the hospital. There's cures. You can be cured. You do not have to worry. You don't have to worry about your children. They need to get the antibodies. I've said it before, let them eat dirt. They build their antibodies, they'll be strong, they'll be healthy. The vaccine is dangerous. It has stuff in it that is dangerous to our kids. Myocarditis is going on, heart scarring when they get into giving it to children under 20, people under 25. It, over 11,000 people, according to VAERS, have died from the jab, and you need to know that, you need to understand it. We don't have to be scared. There are cures, there's no doubt about it. The greatest doctors in the world are there to tell you that there are cures. And I'm supporting you in every way. When you take off the face diaper and let the kids go free and let them catch a little COVID and get out their antibodies and be healthy, young children, and live to an old, old ripe age. Thank you, and I support you in what you're doing relative to COVID. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any more speakers? Thank you. And thank you always to our speakers for coming forward. We always look forward to hearing from you and appreciate your comments. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda item C6.1, C19.7, with the exceptions of C6.1, C7.1, C8.1, C9.1, C10.1, C11.1, C12.1, C14.2, C14.4, C15.1, and C15.2 that have been pulled and placed under discussion. Also, item C17.7, that has been withdrawn completely. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair King. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve out-of-town county school board member travel?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Campbell.
Seconded.
Seconded by Board Member Cummings. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C6.1, and you wish to have further discussion, sir?
Yes. In the interest, and most of these will be rather fast, if we can scamper on through, the, the, there's an awful lot of money that gets spent, and I, I have a, an idea I'd like to explore with the board, and that is to perhaps, some of these situations, if we could send a single person to one of these functions rather than five. And I understand it's, they can be educational, but they, the idea of having someone, someone from a school board, for example, teach other folks from a school board, I just think we've got the talent on this board to send, say, Allison Campbell to the, to a function like this. It would save so much money that then could be used for these other things, because we're, I'm into really scraping up dollars, or send Chair Thrower into a meeting like that, come back, educate us all, just bring us up to speed on it. Maybe, maybe even send a helper, a secretary with her, that type of thing. It just seems to me, we could get a lot of bang for the buck with some of these association situations, educational situations. We've got so much talent around that you, you know, you can, you can stretch the dollar. So that's, that's my thought. If there's any, any thoughts from the board on, on that subject, I, I'm, I would love to expand that. We might grab up $100,000 over, over a period of time with, with associations, calling in experts, that type of thing.
Thank you.
Any thoughts?
Thank you, Board Member Browning. This agenda item, like all of the other agenda items that were pulled just hours ago, have been available to each board member and the public for a week. I've done my due diligence. I hope you will find the FSBA conference, for example, as productive and educational as I have found them to be. Therefore, I'm comfortable and ready to vote on this item without any further discussion from me. Board Member Campbell, do you have further discussion?
The only information that I would like to share is that any professional development that I've ever been able to participate in, from a conference to anything else, I've always gained so much more information being able to attend in person as opposed to having someone come back and try and relay information. The energy in the room and, and unfortunately, without actually seeing who all normally speaks, we've had college professors and researchers come in and share their research of school boards, for example. We've had national, nationally recognized superintendent come and speak, or, or a Harvard professor come. So the caliber of the speakers that have come into these, to these professional development opportunities isn't just another school board member training another school board member, frankly. They, they are nationally recognized experts in a lot of the fields, and the value in having that opportunity to not only learn that as an individual, but also learn it collectively with fellow board members, I think is incredibly valuable, and I'll always believe that. Very strong proponent for professional development and those sorts of things. Additionally, because we are all members of the Florida School Board Association, it also operates as general voting meetings for the Florida School Board Association. So there will be elections and things like that that happen during that conference that I would hope that any board, any member of the School Board Association would want to participate in so that you can have your voice heard. Last year, we did have some things that we had to address on the spot that were not typical and not just in the, and we had dialogue and banter and, and a lot of information that came out that only someone who was attending in person would be able to capitalize on. So I'm a strong proponent for what we're moving forward with the Florida School Board Association, and I think I always will be because of the value that I've seen out of what I've received.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Board Member Cummings, do you have any further discussion, sir?
Okay.
Thank you. Vice Chair King?
No comment.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for the, for the discussion. We will go ahead, and I need a motion to close the discussion and move forward to a vote.
So moved.
Moved by, moved by Board Member Cummings, seconded by Board Member Campbell. Discussion is now closed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. May I have a motion to approve request permission to renew purchase of Gale databases and Gale Virtual Reference Library? Moved by Board Member Cummings.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair King. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C7.1, and you wish to have further discussion, sir?
Yes. The, this is really rather one of the least expensive, but these, it, it seems to me that a, a database like this is available many different ways. $50,000 is just an awful lot of money. In today's world, you can just about, you know, through our library system, there are just so many ways to achieve this kind of information. I would like to, I would like to look at this one, this is an inexpensive one, but some of the bigger ones especially, and just look at the resources we have in the district. Look at browsers, look at databases, look at these things that we could pull, pull together without spending this kind of money. You could, you know, you could do this anytime you've got $10,000, $50,000, but wow, you know, it's so exciting to be able to have an extra $50,000 to, you know, go out to school bus drivers or whatever, when, because we're all scrambling for money. So that's, that's my thought, and it might open a channel to some of our talent that we have in the district to come forward with some of this, because I think we could do just about all of this internally, and perhaps, maybe it's a $10,000 bonus, and boom, just nail it right here through our library. I, I happen to be somewhat familiar with the library system. So anyhow, that's, that's why I pulled it, and any discussion that we could open a channel, we've got PhDs around, we've got a lot of, got a lot of talent. So that's, that's my thought, and I, I share that with the, with the board.
Thank you, Board Member Browning, and thank you for acknowledging the wealth and depth of talent that we do have in Marion County public schools. I've done my due diligence on this topic, I've asked my questions. I'm ready to vote on this item. Vice Chair King?
I'm ready to vote, thank you.
Board Member Cummings?
Ready to vote.
Board Member Campbell?
I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, may I have a motion to close discussion?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Campbell, seconded by Vice Chair King. All those in favor of the motion, or all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. All those in favor of voting for this agenda item C7.1, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, like sign? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the agreement with Pace Center for Girls Incorporated for the dropout prevention program?
Chair Thrower, I think you must see 8.1.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did. I apologize. C8.1. May I have a motion to approve First Amendment for the National Center on Education and the Economy?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Cummings.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair King. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C8.1, and you wish to have further discussion.
Yes, I, I do, and this is, this is very similar, it's just larger dollars. Something like this, I believe we've got the leadership, we've got the capacity within the district to, rather than, than send off a number of people or make it available to a number of people, it seems like we could educate one or educate two or something like that. We could, we could educate a smaller number, and we could look in-house for this $300,000. It just seems like an enormous, education on economy, education and economy. I, I would just like to see this also follow along on something like that. It's easy to jump into some of these, and maybe we've been in them a long time. And the idea of gathering up $300,000 is exciting to me, and, and maybe, maybe even better achieve a, a better outcome. So that's the, that was, I would like any discussion on the, on the idea of that, some of our talent that we have, and maybe a chance for people within our current employee to add to their contribution to our overall effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Browning, and it's certainly true that we must acknowledge the tremendous need for professional development and continue to grow the skill set of each and every employee, especially considering today's challenges. I have done my due diligence and asked my questions prior to this meeting, so therefore, I'm comfortable to move forward and vote. Board Member Cummings, any further discussion?
No discussion.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. Board Member Campbell?
No discussion.
Thank you. Vice Chair King?
No discussion.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further discussion, may I have a motion to close discussion and move on to a vote?
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Browning, seconded by Vice Chair King. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the First Amendment for the National Center on Education and the Economy, please?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Cummings, seconded by Vice Chair King. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. May I have a motion to approve agreement now with Pace Center for Girls Incorporated for the dropout prevention program?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair King, seconded by Board Member Cummings. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C9.1, and you wish to have further discussion, sir?
Yes, I do. It's, it's, Department of Juvenile Justice, other state agencies, we've got a lot of assets within the, within the state of Florida, and a, this is sort of like a charter school as, as I see it. I would, I would like to really enhance this kind of a program. Yes, the dollars follow the student, but the need is so great for some of, some of these students. I would like to see our effort be coupled in, with Department of Juvenile Justice, for example, and that's just one that comes in, comes to mind, but we've got so many, so many resources. And if we could do that, and perhaps even double the funds, as we move along, we have a lot of leverage with the, the value of the student. And so if we could do this, it could, it could perhaps, if we put it in our sights to handle, you know, to address things from this angle, I think it might just get us double or triple bang for the buck in the lives of these, of these young, young women. If that makes sense to you, and I'd like to see, I'd just like to see or hear any comment, discussion on it.
Thank you, Board Member Browning, for acknowledging the already strong partnership that we do have with the Department of Juvenile Justice. You're absolutely right, it is a, is a huge need, and it is needs-based, and I have no doubt that as the need continues to expand, if that's what happens, then we will certainly continue to expand the program. I've, I'm very familiar with Pace Center for Girls and, and the importance of the program, so I'm ready to vote. Board Member Campbell, any further discussion?
The only discussion that I would mention is that Carol Savage, APRC-PRC, is the Executive Director of Pace Center for Girls, and I'm sure she would have, I know I have met with her multiple times, and she's shown how their whole budget is laid out, and, and part of it actually is, if I'm not mistaken, please don't quote me on this, but I believe DJJ is actually a part of it. I know that Pace Center for Girls was founded by a member of, you know, that was an employee of DJJ at some point, and so there are multiple locations around the state. I agree that if there was a way to even expand this program, and we've said for years, if there was an alternative for boys, we would love to see that happen, and we haven't seen that happen yet. So I agree with everything that you've said, but I do believe that at this point, this is our share of their overall budget, which is coming from multiple different sources.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Vice Chair King, do you have any further discussion?
Yeah, just that- Yeah, just that this is an excellent program for our, um, youth, our young youth that are, are girls, and I'm comfortable and ready to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Cummings?
Ready to vote.
Thank you. Hearing no discussion, may I have a motion to close discussion?
I'm moved.
Moved by Board Member Campbell.
Seconded by Vice Chair King, I think.
Seconded by Vice Chair King. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All those in, in favor of the original motion for Pace Center for Girls, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, may I have a motion to approve First Amendment to Independent Contractor Agreement with Ocala Consulting and Prevention LLC for 2021-2022 school year?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair King. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C 10.1, and you wish to have further discussion, sir?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the, um, the increase in dollars, uh, really caught my attention, and I just, uh, I, I would like to see a, an effort, uh, by the district to, we've got, uh, Department of Family and Children, uh, we've got Juvenile Justice, and, and, and I, I, again, I, I've seen these come, I used to be on the, on the board up there at, uh, Department of Juvenile Justice, and there, there's so much available that's out there, uh, and we can, we can, I think we can leverage, uh, what we're trying to accomplish, uh, many different ways, and, and this was a, this was a big, it was a half million dollars, uh, and it got, it got bumped up, um, and I, um, you know, every hundred thousand dollars is a big deal to me. Uh, so I would like to see this get into that, get into that, uh, program, and perhaps we can hire some experts, we've got experts within the district, perhaps we can, uh, you know, theoretically do a better job, uh, with, with some of the resources we have. So I, I just wanted to bring that to the, to the board's attention, and look for any ideas that might come today, or might come at another time, since it was on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Browning, and, and thank you for, for recognizing the importance of serving students' mental health needs, um, a student that is able to access their education and, and do as well in possible in school, uh, definitely increases their chances for better citizenship moving forward. This is an S R two funded mental health grant that acknowledges, um, all of the, the pressures that our students have been under the last couple of years, so it really was no surprise to me after doing my due diligence that there was, there, uh, there's an ask for an increase, um, at this time. Uh, therefore I am comfortable and, and ready to vote on this item. Um, Board Member Cummings?
I, I too agree with you there that, um, because of COVID, and this, this past year, past two school terms that we were in, and current term, um, things have changed, uh, mental health has become a, a major issue with our, our population, and, um, I'm in agreement of moving forward with this.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. Um, Board Member Campbell?
I, I also am in full agreement that our, our students need this availability of these services, and, and we have seen an increase in the need, but I also want to acknowledge, and I've, I've heard this from you a couple of times so far, I want to acknowledge that, I, I concur, we have a lot of talent in this district, and at some point, it's possible that we may be able to have our own, provide these kinds of services, but we aren't there right now, and we don't have in our staffing plan to actually have enough of these folks. So at this point, I'm, I'm completely fine with this contract.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Um, Vice Chair King?
Yes, I'm, I'm comfortable, um, voting on the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Vice Chair King. Um, seeing no further discussion, may I have a motion to close discussion?
I'm moved.
Moved by Board Member Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Browning. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion passes unanimously. Um, may I have a vote for, to approve the First Amendment to Independent Contractor Agreement with Ocala Consulting and Prevention LLC?
So move.
Moved by, actually, we just have to vote, because we already had a motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion passes unanimously, thank you. May I have a motion to approve of disposition of tangible property?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Campbell, seconded by Board Member Cummings. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I'm sorry, we didn't need a vote yet, I apologize. Um, Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C 11.1, and you wish to have further discussion, sir?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this has been going on for a while, this dis- uh, uh, disposition of, um, of, um, tangible property, uh, and it's, it's, uh, to me, it's, it's a source of revenue that is rather exciting. Uh, some of these things can, can drift along and sort of be a problem that, that we might want to, um, that we might want to alleviate, but really, I, I think, and I, the reason I want to bring it to the board is see, here's some discussion, um, there is a, there's an opportunity, uh, to sell goods like this, uh, and to learn marketing, and learn merchandising, uh, and, and that's what we do, we're an educational operation. So I'm thinking that instead of continually going to a specific, um, contract that we've had in the past, uh, that, you know, perhaps there were some situations where it, we just were unable to handle it, but right now, I think we might, uh, some of what I've seen, we might have some marketing people, uh, within the district, and we might have some opportunities to create, uh, a marketing situation, whether it be an eBay-type situation, and I, I hate using, uh, actual brand names, but that kind of a, a marketing, uh, tool that would teach how to move products like this, some are still quite valuable, uh, some perhaps would not make the cut, but it's just something that, um, that it seems like is a great opportunity, uh, in this, in this environment. Uh, it's, it's, you know, if, if, if the district was my business, I would push very hard on this, and we could probably even teach people how to do it, uh, because we've got, we've got some incredibly talented, uh, staff, and learning how to merchandise is how you make millions. It just is, and here we have free product, so wow, we could just step forward. So that's why I was bringing it forward, if we could look into this and, and, um, you know, get it part, i- i- into our program, and, and, and make the idea, uh, let the, let folks know that we, that we, w- we may sell it at an auction right now just to get rid of it, but we're really, I think, committed to raising any revenue we can raise, uh, just like the Chicago bricks, uh, that type of thing, you could easily begin to, uh, more than pay for your way. So it just, it looked like, uh, to me, like a huge situation, we might, we might be, and I'll just throw out a crazy number, but we're gonna make a million dollars a year, operating through a nationwide, uh, marketing program, you say, I'll be darned, wow, we had this little market down here, and there was nobody bidding, but we went worldwide, and all of a sudden, the kids learned how to do this, too. It could be just incredible. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Browning, and, and just to clarify for the community, the dollar amount of sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and four cents is the estimated value of the tangible, uh, property, not what we're paying to get rid of it, and, and these are items, um, such as, uh, outdated and obsolete computers, uh, mostly this time around, and we know that at some point, computers that aren't up to date can't talk to the newer computers, so, um, they become, um, unusable. So what has been past practice for the school board, I have learned, is that, um, we either scrap them, um, it depends on the market value of the scrap, we donate them, and, and I'm aware of quite a few, um, parties and, um, and charities that have benefited from our donations through the years, or they've been cannibalized. Um, in the case of our school buses, our old school buses, we have a boneyard, and, uh, Chico, and the guys get out there and, and get whatever they can out of there, so by the time the buses go to weeks auction, for example, they're pretty much scrap metal at this point, and they're going to go at the value of, uh, what, um, the market will bear. So I just wanted to, to make sure that that was clear, that we're talking about obsolete and/or unrepairable property that will be removed from inventory. So, uh, knowing that, um, I'll say that I'm comfortable and, and ready to vote. Um, Vice Chair King?
I'm ready to vote.
Uh, Board Member Campbell?
Ready to vote as well.
Board Member Cummings?
Ready to vote.
Thank you. Um, seeing no further discussion, may I have a motion to close the discussion?
I'm moved.
Moved by Board Member Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair King. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Um, like, we'll go ahead and vote now on this motion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. May I have a motion to approve Budget Resolution Number One, September twenty, twenty twenty-one, Budget Amendments?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Campbell.
Seconded by Board Member Cummings.
Mr. Browning, I wish, uh, I understand you pulled item C 12.1, and you wish to have further discussion, sir?
Yes, I do, thank you, Madam Chair. The, um, the size of changes, uh, troubles me, and when we have such large changes, I would like to advocate that they automatically, uh, are so big that they automatically, uh, come on the, the, uh, the board, uh, for discussion. Uh, these are, these are rather large, uh, quarter of a million dollars, uh, million dollars changes, and, and where I see you could have, you can have changes, you know, as time goes on, uh, I, I like the idea of, um, of, uh, giving these the, the dignity of explanation, of discussion, uh, just so, so everybody knows we're on top of, you know, million-dollar change, uh, when it wasn't seen going in, but it, there, there had to be a change, there had to be a, uh, an adjustment, and okay, fine, but it's just big money, and I think big money warrants discussion. So that's, that's, uh, the reason that I would like to see this, uh, and, and also the great, uh, just a, a, a final note, is the, the grading on each of these schools as we go through, there's quite a, quite a number of these, uh, uh, that have been brought forward, and we get a lot of A-plus type performance, and I would like to see the A-plus type performance brought forward, uh, on a regular basis, as these, as these take place, um, uh, as these audits take place, I would like to see, uh, these A-plus type, uh, um, accounting performance, the, the audits, uh, um, be recognized, uh, because A-plus is A-plus. It's just, it's just exciting when you see this happen at schools, like we did today, you know, that it's, uh, tonight, that's, I, I just think it's incredibly important to the people that are out there getting a job done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Board Member Browning, and, and you'll be thrilled to hear that that, uh, normally does take place, um, schools that have had no findings, um, with their accounting in their school, um, secretaries, uh, do come before us to be honored, because you're absolutely right, um, with the incredible complexity of school budgets, it truly is a reflection on, on their expertise and their, their due diligence. Um, this item reflects a typical, um, budget, uh, cycle, um, for us, and I remember, too, coming onto the board, just looking at, uh, the dollars that were flowing through, and at one point it looked like we had a deficit, and when I spoke with our fabulous CFO, Teresa Boston Ellis, um, she explained to me that, you know, we have appropriations that come in at different times, and then we have revenue that comes in at different times, property tax, for example, our one mil funding referendum, things like that, so, so there's definitely a influx and an outflux, and once it was explained to me, I, I felt much more comfortable with it, so I'm ready to vote. Um, Board Member Cummings?
Ready to vote.
Thank you. Uh, Board Member Campbell?
And I agree with everything that, um, Madam Chair said. I also, when I was new to the board, sat down with Teresa Boston Ellis for a while to understand the ins and outs, and some of these I'm, I'm looking at, yes, it shows that we, uh, have revenues and appropriations increased by one, little more than one point four million, but I'm seeing it's when grants are being awarded, and some are hitting it, you know, during this, uh, during this cycle, and so where it may have been in the budget at a different time, because it's hit now, that's, that's what these adjustments are. So it's just ensuring that each month is aligned, uh, so that where we've budgeted for it, it actually is hitting whenever, and so that's what these adjustments are, and so I'm, I'm ready to vote, I'm comfortable with it.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Um, seeing no further discussion, uh, may I have a motion to close discussion?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Campbell, seconded by Vice Chair King. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We'll now vote on the item, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Um, the motion passes unanimously, thank you. May I have a motion to approve discount catalog bids through, oops?
Aye.
That's okay. Uh, to approve discount catalog bids, three eight eight two A H, art supplies and equipment, three eight eight three A H, science supplies and equipment, three eight eight four A H, special needs and therapeutic equipment, three eight eight five A H, teaching supplies, three eight eight six A H, physical education supplies and equipment, three eight eight seven H, music supplies, instruments, repair and maintenance services, and three eight eight A H, vocational supplies and equipment and term contracts. Moved by, uh, Board Member Cummings.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Campbell. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C fourteen point two, and you wish to have further discussion, sir?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the, um, I have a real problem with, without talking about, uh, discount catalog, uh, type, um, uh, fundamental price establishment. Uh, it's, it's my experience that a discount catalog, uh, has list prices i- in it, and when we get into these things, i- i- it may look good, it may kind of seem good, but there isn't any real criteria for knowing, uh, just how well we're doing, and the, the dollar amount is so large, that it may, you know, I, I think discount catalog is, is sort of a giveaway, and I would, I, I would like to see this go through someone, uh, some which way, because a million, three hundred, a million, uh, 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 you know, over a million and a quarter, uh, in, in items that can, it's like no bid, and they're big, they're, these are, you know, it amounts to a lot of money, and this is that, the area where we're all trying to kind of scramble and, and come up with, uh, you know, a million here, a million there, and, um, so it, it just, uh, would pay for a lot of bus drivers, uh, it, it's, it's a, it's a troubling, uh, opening that I would see where there's just kind of the, the, the barn door is left open. Uh, it, it bothers me, uh, that we could drive better, I would like to see someone right on top of each one of these, and maybe have a second, um, a second, uh, price evaluation on every item that goes through over, say, certain amount, or something like, it's some criteria where, where it just isn't, it isn't just out in the open, and it, uh, able to go because it's a discount catalog and, and in this, uh, in this contract. So that's, that's the reason I bring it to the board, and any, any, uh, any way you can illuminate the, uh, the idea, um, you know, I'm for it, I want to hear it. Uh, I, I like, if we could cut these dollars, you know, by twenty percent, by thirty percent, by forty percent, uh, it would be very exciting.
Thank you, Board Member Browning, and that would certainly excite all of us. Um, this particular agenda item is for competitive, um, discount catalog bids, and there was a time that we were prohibited from even ordering things. that we were prohibited from even ordering things online, which really put us at a disadvantage financially. Thank you. Thankfully, that that's no longer the case. There has, was quite a bid process when this was sent out by purchasing, it was advertised publicly. There were actually 88 bids received. Five vendors submitted a no-bid letter, four were deemed non-responsive for failure to comply with all the statutes that have to be complied with to do business with us. And then there were also four vendors that were deemed non-responsive for failing to meet the specifications for the bid. So there are actually 80 vendors being recommended to meet the specifications of the discount catalog bids. And this should have, continue to have a very positive effect on schools and district staff because they'll have access to discounted products that are being used directly in the classroom by use of these online catalogs. So after asking my questions, I feel comfortable voting. Vice Chair King, any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Campbell?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Cummings?
I actually like this one. This gives our schools options and encourages competitive shopping. So I'm ready to vote.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no further discussion, may I have a motion to close discussion?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Campbell?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair King. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We'll go ahead and vote on the original motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Renew Bid 3833 GM Network Cable Installation Services? May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Campbell?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Cummings. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled Item C-14.4, and you wish to have further discussion, sir.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The key here is, for me, is there's an enormous difference between, we've got, I know we've got a couple of services, and technologically, these are changing all the time. And I would like to, I would like to include in this a, an examination and hopefully involvement in the new satellite services that are coming available. And as they come available, especially the way we're spread out, this could be, if we get the, I think, I think all the components are going to be there for it. And we may be able to drop our, this $600,000, half million dollars, cable, other methods of data communication is just changing rapidly. And I think if we targeted this, we could all, all smile with maybe, maybe, maybe a 50% reduction in, looking forward. So everybody, I'm just saying, wow, load your, load your intellectual guns and keep an eye out for this because it's coming. And it'll be as powerful as fiber optics as it, as it comes forward. And I believe it's going to be a huge opportunity. Another couple hundred thousand we can grab up, maybe more like that.
Thank you, Board Member Browning. And, you know, to have that type of forward thinking and looking at innovative practices is really, really important. And during my comment time, I'll be sharing something, so I'll give you a little bit of a sneak preview. Yes, a little bit of a teaser. And we have heard so much from our constituents, how important being connected, you know, broadband, cable, satellite, anything that can be done, especially in our outlying areas, to bring that clear communication to every, especially student that need it. So I 100% agree. It's going to be really interesting going forward. This bid was awarded to Network Cabling Services for the needs of the district, but we also have other needs as well that will be addressed through other bids. But I love what you just said. And I'm ready to vote. Board Member Cummings? Ready? Board Member Campbell?
I agree.
Vice Chair King?
Yeah, I agree. Technology is always changing and it is driving, and I am ready to vote.
I'm ready to get a lower cell phone bill. All right. All those in favor of closing discussion. May I have a motion to close discussion, I'm sorry. I should have it down by now.
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Cummings.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair King. All those in favor say aye. Probably because she was closer to my ear.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We'll now go ahead and vote on the item. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Contract for Architectural Design Services for New Central Warehouse, Project Number 20-102. May I have a motion, please?
Moved.
Moved by Vice Chair King.
Seconded.
Seconded by Board Member Cummings. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled Item C-15.1, and you wish to have further discussion, sir.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The, the need for discussion here is, while this passes beautifully, capital funds, it's $300,000 and fits right beautifully into the capital funds financing and into the millage. It's, I have concern about the contracts that we set up contracts, and this, this came from discussion within, within the district with, with staff. We have contracts within the, within the district, and it's, individual contractors are selected. And then it ends up being, say, five, just for a round number. And, and we rotate within those five. And often we get into a situation of, of, cost plus, it's just the best way to say it. And it's so inefficient dollar-wise. Cost plus just is difficult for me. And I would like to see the board think about it or talk about it. And anytime you get into cost plus, and I've built many a building, whenever you get into cost plus, it, you just get your pocketbook out because you're going to be paying. There's no incentive on the other side for frugal, you know, other than just goodwill or trying to, trying to make it look as, as positive as possible. It's, cost plus is a disaster when you're trying to, you know, get full value for your money. And I would just like to not engage in that specifically. And it looks like we've been doing it a long time. I'm not even pointing fingers at any specific contractor or, or source. But it's just something that I think, and I use this one just to bring it up and not go into all the rest of them, but just to, to bring it up. I would like to see that get expanded. We can stretch our dollar so much farther, I believe, that it's just almost a no-brainer for me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Board Member Browning. And yes, it's always a pleasure for me when I see those deductive change orders come through. Those are the happiest to approve. My understanding is that a professional services selection process was held to select a design professional and in accordance with Florida statutes. And that's something that trips us up a lot. We have so many requirements. And it makes me sad because it makes it difficult for some, you know, young gun upstart companies sometimes to do business with us because they can't meet all of our statutory requirements. So I would love to see some statutory requirements changed to give some of these small business incubators and people that are really trying to get business that they know the check's going to be good and give them an opportunity. So I would very much look forward to advocating for that as much as possible. The contracts, when I look at them, the language and all of the different disclosures are really mind-boggling. And to think that there's 600 at least, plus probably a bunch of others that I'm not even aware of, that we have to approve and go through and rely on the incredible wealth of knowledge and talent that we know that we have here in Marion County Public Schools is a testament to, to everyone's expertise. So that being said, I'm comfortable and ready to vote. Vice Chair King?
Yes. What was coming to my mind is whenever I speak to facilities about, you know, these issues, it's the statutes and it ties our hands. So things that, like in the corporate world, that would seem easy and wouldn't get in our way, we're a completely different animal. And that's what, is what happens in most of these cases. So I am comfortable and ready to vote.
Thank you, Vice Chair King. Board Member Campbell?
I agree that it is statute sometimes that holds us up. But I also encourage, as I've been doing recently, about these very same things, speaking directly with our Executive Director of Operations. I've had multiple conversations with her lately about these very same concerns. So, but I'm comfortable with moving forward with this vote.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Board Member Cummings?
Comfortable moving forward.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Cummings. Seeing no further discussion, may I have a motion to close discussion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Board Member Campbell, seconded by Board Member Cummings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We'll now vote on the original motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve HVAC Systems Replacement at Northwest Transportation, Project Number 21-111?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Cummings?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair King. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled Item C-15.2, and you wish to have further discussion, sir.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is identical in subject. However, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, everybody that commented addressed this one for me, and that is our House, our Senate, our, we have the biggest, strongest delegation. It's, it's almost an unfair fight when we go up there and we work with our legislative delegation. I mean, I'm, you don't even have to wait for them to come around, you know, to have those delegation meetings. You just, they're just available. And they're powerful. And each has a sphere of influence. And all of these things can change. I mean, you can change them. They're looking to, you know, do things like this. And the governor's looking to approve it. It pops through the House, pops through the Senate. And so anything that you all can think of, and let's, let's just agree to, if we can, agree to discuss these things as they come up, those 30-page requirements that might have been done somewhere in the, in the past. So it's, I'm preaching to the choir, I know. So if we can, if we can just, you know, just change them because they're costing us money. And every dollar counts to my way of thinking. So we just go in that direction. And I thank you all for indulging me in these, in these various subjects. Because to me, I think they're just incredibly important. Every dollar counts.
Thank you, Board Member Browning. And yes, sir, you are definitely preaching to the choir, and you are surrounded by four other very fiscally responsible and conservative school board members that want nothing more than to build great facilities, make great repairs the first time, and get the job done right. So you are with kindred spirits, sir. Any further discussion? Board Member Campbell?
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Cummings?
Moved.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chair King?
I agree. I was raised by my great-grandfather, and I'll even bring it down. And he says, "You watch your pennies and the dollars will take care of themselves."
Hallelujah. Absolutely. You're here.
All right. And I'm ready to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, may I have a motion to close discussion?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Campbell, seconded by Board Member Cummings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We will now vote on the original motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to donations. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $47,424.40. $2,500 to Bellevue High School from their business partner, Advent Health Ocala, via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $8,012.21 to Dr. N.H. Jones from Dr. N.H. Jones Parent Organization. $1,000 to Hillcrest Public School from Michael Simpson. $2,500 to Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks from Public's corporate office. $2,500 to Lake Ware High School from their business partner, The Guest House Ocala, via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $4,000 to Marion County Public Schools from Band of Brothers Incorporated. $1,000 to Marion County Public Schools Curriculum Instruction and Digital Learning Secondary from Public Education Foundation of Marion County. School Supplies and Hygiene Items valued at $6,859.68 to Romeo Elementary School from Enchanted Backpack. $1,000 to Shady Hill Elementary from Ocala Electric Utility. $2,500 to Shady Hill Elementary from their business partner, The Paddock Mall, Paddock Mall Chick-fil-A, via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. Via the Public Education Foundation is all it said. $2,500 to Spar Elementary School from their business partner, The Guest House Ocala, via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $3,995 to Stanton Weersdale Elementary School from PUC Puggy Chapter NSDar. $2,500 to Vanguard High School from their business partner, Advent Health Ocala, via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $2,500 to Ward Highlands Elementary School from their business partner, Lee's Chicken Stillwell Enterprises LLC, via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $2,500 to Westport High School from their business partner, The Guest House Ocala, via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. Clothes, shoes, basketballs, and markers valued at $1,557.51 to Wyoming Park Elementary School from CC's Wish List. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Campbell?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair King. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes unanimously. Board Member Campbell, would you kindly give the thanks tonight?
Gladly. This is an amazing outpouring of support, and we are so grateful to our community continuing to support our schools. It's from a variety of sources, as you can hear from this list. And a lot of these are business partners coming through the Public Education Foundation of Marion County, doing an exceptional job. But just because we've said that we have all of our schools covered with at least one business partner doesn't mean that we won't always accept more business partners for every school, as well as additional donations of we, as we've received, and also from parent organizations and all of those amazing resources. We're just so grateful. It helps us do our job better, helps our schools be able to operate better. And thank you so much to the community and their outpouring. We're grateful.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. All right, moving on to a vote. All those in, well, we already did. Moving right along. All right. We're down to Board Committee Reports and Concerns. A couple of meeting reminders. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for November 4th, 2021 at 9:00 AM. The purpose of the work session is to discuss five-year work plan updates, Howard Academy updates, quarterly data review, Board Member Residence Areas, and COVID-19 updates. I also have another piece of information. This is in regards to our instructional materials adoption process, a process that we're very proud of. It just exemplifies our transparency for the community. We want and love for them to be included. This is the reminder that per Board Policy 4.21, public community members of the instructional materials adoption process are to be selected by the School Board of Marion County Recommendation. So we get to make recommendations. I believe there's two. We each get to recommend two for each textbook to serve on the textbook adoption committees. So this is a chance for our community to give voice. And it really is a neat, interactive, community process. Each school board member may choose one representative for each subcommittee participating in the adoption process. And I feel like we also had an alternate, but maybe it's changed. So what I'm reading right here is each school board member may choose one representative for each subcommittee participating in the adoption process. You may want to have an alternate in mind in case someone has to step off. For public record purposes, board members are requested to submit their community -- For public record purposes, board members are requested to submit their community member recommendations to Ms. Martinez Lopez via email on the community committee member form, which will be sent to each board member by Ms. Martinez Lopez.
I will send out this evening. Their forms will be attached. Just go ahead and put your person you would like to request, and then I'll submit that.
Okay, thank you. And all community member recommendation forms must be submitted to Ms. Martinez Lopez. Please mark your calendar no later than November 30th. So we do have some time. And there'll also be some additional instructions going along with that to remind us to save the PDF to your computer after you've completed it and then attach that saved document to the email. So please, you know, clarify in your follow-up email anything that I may have not been on clear on.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Do you also want to go ahead and include the alternate person on there?
They didn't request an alternate, but I'll double-check with Jennifer Leeds.
No, but she was just, the chair was just saying.
Yeah. Double-check with Ms. Leeds. She was the one who supported.
Okay, okay. And maybe I was thinking of another committee process, but.
May I also ask, the subject, is it math we're adopting this time around? Do we, is that the, okay, thank you.
It is math. Thank you.
Because that matters for who we're appointing to it. We don't want to put, you know.
Right, right. Someone that is an English.
Someone that is necessarily on the math, right.
Right. Great point. Thank you. All right. And I believe that's all I had in terms of updates, and we'll begin with Attorney Powers. Anything from legal tonight, sir?
Madam Chair. You didn't read the top of Page 21, the following administrative briefing and work session for November 18th.
Oh, I see. Yep. Went on to the next page. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for November 18th, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss stop-loss and enrollment update, self-funded health plan, Marion County Hospital District Presentation 2022, 2023 instructional calendar, and COVID-19 updates. Okay.
What was that date?
18. November 18th at 9:00 a.m. And, yes.
Thursday, yeah.
Yes, always Thursdays, opposite of school board meeting Tuesdays. All righty. Now we will go ahead and hear from legal.
I do have some research and findings that I believe are more timely in conjunction with some upcoming items that we'll be presenting within our next board meeting, so I'm going to reserve those comments that I was going to go into tonight, so they're more appropriately I did want to state, as to our resolution on the COVID-19 updates, that, you know, we heard tonight in commentary that that was not, somehow that there was not notice or opportunity to be heard, that people weren't given input, and I don't believe that's accurate. Because I believe that those were properly noticed. I believe that they were placed on an agenda. I believe that anyone who looked at that would have been able to see that those items were coming up for discussion. And also, I don't believe it's accurate that we have ended our COVID-19 leave, given that we've just worked on some new resolution items as well. A resolution naturally sunsets after 90 days. And when it sunsets, we have the option to renew it, or we have the option to not renew it. And I don't think that, from what I've seen being worked on here, we've got the resolution, the updated potential resolution is being worked on and is coming up for another upcoming session. So little bits of perhaps unclear or misinformation can really lead to people getting a wrong impression. So I just wanted to clarify from a legal perspective that this news that we were going to address, it was out there, and that we, this is not something that has been ended. It is something that is being renewed, but we have to do it via a resolution as opposed to, as opposed to simply extending a resolution, which we can't do. So I just wanted to clarify. That's my clarifying statement for that.
Thank you. And I believe we will be meeting to vote on that new resolution this coming Monday at 8:00 a.m.
Correct.
And that's been noticed?
That has been noticed.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else from legal?
Not at this time.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Dr. Gallett?
Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the board. I don't have anything additional tonight, other than to say thank you again for recognizing our outstanding students and our school teams and department. We're, everyone's working really hard and appreciate their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Browning?
Let's see. I really pretty much contributed, I'd like to contribute my time back to the cause, because I've taken a lot of time and covered many of the areas, and it's so nice to hear some of the discussion. We have, we have so many, especially this thing that just came up on the math books, we have so many qualified people, top of the world, villages, the retired people, just the best in the world, right here. And we could, we could have a plethora of committees that could help on a volunteer basis, on a committee basis, that it just seems like a treasure that we could utilize for the good of the cause. So I'm just very excited to hear these things, and they seem to just fall into place. So thank you all, and I'll contribute to remainder of my time. That's all that I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Browning. Vice Chair King?
Yeah. Well, I have had the pleasure, the past couple weeks, reviewing Rookie Teacher of the Year on their committee, and it's always enlightening because it helps you understand and get into the minds of the teacher's mindset and what's going on at the time. And one thing that I have noticed up to this point is, like last year, it was like COVID was at the top of the concern, and it's still there, but the way these teachers have adapt and what now they're maybe seeing as other concerns or what their community concerns are have changed. And so it's kind of made for some interesting reading. I'm not saying it's all, but some of, our teachers are being really creative, and it's just been really good and enlightening reading. Again, I do want to touch a little bit on last week, because some comments were made about Stanton Weersdale, again, and I was part of, I was the chair back in 2017, when I actually went and looked at it, and, you know, my memory wasn't necessarily serving me right at what had happened, and we talked about, you know, the past superintendent and deputy superintendent, and the school board attorney looked at it, and it was decided that, and it wasn't even me in 2017 that decided it, but there was some more research, because it's been going on for many, many years, that it was a county issue and not a school board issue. I also had a former school board member call me last week, and he even said that he went out and looked at it and other employees. So again, I just want to make that clear, that this school board for 20-something years has, have not been not paying attention to what's been going on out there. Something else that was brought to my attention, and I knew about it, but I didn't realize it was clear, is that there was an OCR complaint that had been filed from the Marion County School Board. And Mr. Browning, you were also a co-signer on the complaint for the OCR complaint, and it was dismissed in 2019 at the end of it. I don't, I don't know if you were informed about that at the time or not, but I just felt it necessary that I needed to clear the air and make sure that the accusations that had been made against myself, there's previous superintendent, school board members, and stuff like that, that it was, the accusations have been unfounded, basically. And, you know, the OCR complaint that you and, you know, I don't know if I should say the name or not, but, you know, it's been dismissed. So it's been looked at even legally and has been dismissed, and I just wanted to make that clear this evening. I don't know what else to say, but I just felt necessary to make that clear.
Vice Chair King?
And I think that's what I had to share this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Cummings?
Madam Chair, may I address that?
Actually, sir, these are our public comment times, and we're just going to stick to that. Each person has an opportunity, and then we'll just keep moving forward.
Madam Chair, I don't have any comments tonight. I yield my time back to you.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. Board Member Campbell?
I have a few things this evening. Thank you so much. First of all, the kids were so moving. I mean, it was amazing, the students from Saddlewood Elementary School and both of those readings, it kind of took me off guard a little bit, because I actually was emotional about it, but it just shows the power of our students and how good our teachers are doing and how wonderful the education is in Marion County Public Schools. I want to offer congratulations to all of our bands who competed this weekend at Westport. There was large band competition, all of our high school bands competed, and so congratulations to all of them, the winners and those who also just competed, because just getting out there is half the battle, I guess you could say. Congratulations also to all of our student artists who had their artwork on display this weekend at FFO, because that was amazing and wonderful outpouring in our community of supporting our student artists. Frankly, we have some very, very talented students, both in music and the arts and all within our community, and we should be very proud. And on the athletics front, we also have volleyball teams, softball teams, football teams, so many of our athletic teams are also heading to district playoffs that are ongoing, starting and ongoing. So best of luck to all of our student athletes, who also can stay safe and healthy as they play to the best of their abilities. Then I also wanted to offer a shout out to our gifted education teachers, students, and families. My understanding is that Chancellor Aliva has declared next week, November 1st through the 5th, 2021, to be Gifted Education Week in Florida, and so because our next board meeting will be after that, I wanted to give a shout out now in advance to all the gifted education teachers, students, and families. And now on to a little bit of board business. I wanted to say how grateful I am to Talent Development and Human Resources, because those teams have worked very diligently, and you guys know, one of my little sticking projects is the updating of the job descriptions, which is one of our responsibilities to vote on those, and we did that on several of our job descriptions this evening. I'm a firm believer that the best way to hold someone accountable is to ensure that their job description says what their job is, and so if we get them right, then we'll be able to hold them better accountable, and so that they'll actually be hired to do what we want them to do. So I'm grateful that Talent Development and Human Resources has worked very diligently to ensure that. I have two remaining things. One is about the intergovernmental meeting that we have coming up, and that agenda is out, as you all probably saw that email yesterday. I've personally been assigned to the Hurricane Hardening Agenda item, and my purpose of that is just to bring awareness and information about the role of school district employees and how they essentially didn't sign up to be first responders, but they become that when a hurricane shelter opens, frankly. I mean, they are, they are there on, boots on the ground, and I want to bring that awareness to that issue. However, because they've assigned it to me as Hurricane Hardening, and I'm putting that in quotes, I know that there might be additional conversation that could occur for actually building that additional shelter, and I know I had a conversation with Preston Bolden about that today. So I don't know if there's another board member that also wants to tag team on that item with me, if, Chair Thorpe, if you'd like to tag team on that. So I know my name is assigned to it, but I know that kind of has been something that you've been mentioning as well. So I certainly can address the staff part of it, and just from an informational standpoint. But I didn't grow up in Florida, and I dare say that we're getting to where the majority of our community citizens also did not grow up in Florida. I don't know what the actual numbers would be, but I do think that that is always an interesting thing. It was interesting to me whenever I first started seeing our emergency plan and how many of our staff members are associated with every one of those shelter openings, and frankly, just to bring it up from an informational standpoint. So, and then my final comment, this one is one of those that I certainly am not asking for any fellow board members to respond at this juncture, and I'm not seeking, I'm not trying to call anyone out, I'm not doing any of that at all. But I do want to comment about our upcoming board reorganization meeting that we have. So again, please understand my comments are not trying to call anyone out, I'm not seeking any response, I'm not trying to do that. However, I do want to bring to light, following our last reorganization meeting in November of 2020, several comments were made by then-board member Beth McCall about our processes, and she referenced how the county commission chooses their chair. And while I'm not specifically referencing all of the things that she referenced at that juncture, because frankly, I haven't gone back to listen to all the things that she mentioned, I did want to bring to light something that I remember happening in 2020, specifically with the county commission choosing of their chair, and that was that Commissioner Kathy Bryant became chair, because the other four commissioners at the time had already declared and were running for reelection for either county commission or for another constitutional office. And the county commission did make that choice at that time to put the only person who wasn't on the ballot. So as you all are aware, being a chair of an elected body can certainly have political implications, and so I appreciated that selection at the time. The Florida School Board Association also teaches us that there's a strict distinction between board members as candidates and when they get elected, and when we get elected, I should say. So where those lines become blurred is when a board member might become chair and voted upon by fellow board members, when he or she might become a candidate, and not knowing at this juncture if we have any candidates in this room. And in three weeks, we will be making this decision for who our next chair will be, and every vote I've made as an elected school board member, I've done so with, from a very informed position. So right now, I don't feel that I have enough information to cast that ballot. So I've also heard that announcements may be coming after the city of Ocala runoff election. However, our board organization meeting is the same day as that city election. So we potentially could be choosing a chair without all of the necessary information. So I'm not asking, again, for fellow board members to make any kind of declaration tonight or express your decision, that's not what I'm saying. I'm similarly asking that if all possible over the next three weeks, that we could have all of the information that we need before heading into our reorganization meeting. And so we will be choosing the position of our 2022 chair with all of the informed information that we need in order to make that the best decision possible. And those conclude my comments. Madam Chair?
Thank you very much, Board Member Campbell. And yes, getting back to the draft agenda for our intergovernmental meeting, I definitely wanted to pay homage to your passion and taking the lead as far as the school, the acknowledgement. You know, we all feel that way, but, you know, you certainly shared that, so I wanted you to have the opportunity. I also realize you were not on the board when we did take our trip over to Pasco County to see their freestanding building, so I'd be happy to partner with you on that. I'm in conversation with David Hurley, he about the possibility of Mr. Knight as well, because he did join us, and that really is, you know, his expertise, you know, when it comes to building a building like that, potentially for us in the future, which certainly would be a great service to the, to the community and would do a lot to not disrupt our educational process, should we have a very long and extended storm. So that'll be a fun item to talk about. So thank you for bringing that up, and I'm happy to partner with that, with you, and I'll certainly bring it to Mr. Hurley's attention as far as the draft agenda. And so thanks. All right. And I don't have very much, and I want to honor, you know, the fact that you're, the information that you shared was not really for commentary. In my memory, I will say that I've seen it done many different ways. Sometimes people that are campaigning, they're also serving as chair, vice chair at the same time, and it could be due to a myriad of reasons, none of which I'll go into here. So we're definitely heading into a unique time, so I will definitely honor your comments by saying that with having only one board member that will be continuing for the next two years, for sure. Just don't, not on the ballot. Right, you are not on the ballot. So thank you for bringing that awareness. I would like to sing the praises of all of our employees. You know, you don't get to zero cases of COVID with our staff and a minimal number of, with students by not doing your part. And throughout this whole pandemic, people have just stepped up, they have suffered tremendous losses. We have kept schools open, I've said this over and over, we are battle-tested, but certainly not battle-weary. And so while we celebrate where we are in the decline of this surge, and I'm feeling so optimistic, because as it gets cold and the doors close up north, the doors in Florida open, and the windows open, and people go outside, and we get a chance to breathe fresh air after being stuck in air conditioning for most of the summer. So it's certainly my hope and prayer that our numbers will continue to stay low, and all of the immunities that we've built up for any variant that might come our way will be more. will be more and more mild as time goes by. That being said, I'd just like to encourage all of our employees to please continue, you know, the layered mitigation. We're not in masks tonight, but we're still socially distanced. Every single person sitting here is a critical part of our mission, and we want to keep everyone healthy. So keep washing those hands, keep doing everything that you've been doing to keep our numbers low so we can keep our kids in school so that we can attract more employees to our district. And this is a nationwide issue. I do not know, really, there might be a few districts in the whole United States that don't have bus driver critical shortages, that don't have special needs educator critical shortages, and other critical shortages of teachers just across the board. Anyone that works in public education understands the challenges. I will say personally, I can't think of a career that is more gratifying, but you better put your big boots on. So, but you have a lot of support. So please come and join us. We are going to be, we've already welcomed our volunteers back. We're getting that going. I'm so excited for Bus Buddies. Something that's so near and dear to my heart and so greatly needed. Just looking forward to continuing to bring the community in, welcoming them. We have so many people that are ready to help. They just want to know how and want to know what they're getting into. So that's the communication piece, for sure. And we've had COVID, by nature of the situation, has had to take the top of our attention for the bulk of two years. But this is just kind of a fun, potential challenge in problem-solving and opportunity that I wanted to share, you know. Board Member Browning, I don't know you very well yet, but what I do know is that you're a visionary. So I am really looking forward to hearing your thoughts on this. And I'm just going to go ahead and pass this out. And what this is, is that it shares that we spend close to $8 million a year on electric and propane, and that's a lot of money. And we know that a lot of our buildings are not really insulated the way they need to be and not really, you know, they're old. And so we have a lot of money blowing right out the door. And to me, $8 million is a ton of money. So when it comes to being visionary and it comes to being willing to just look at different countries and what they've done, even on a smaller scale, we are the horse capital in the world. We all know that. So maybe we can continue to put horses to good use in a whole new way.
Are you going to share with the public what this is? Please read the headline, Madam Chair.
Here is the headline. "Poo Power: Horse Manure From World Cup Powers Helsinkie Homes." Helsinki is in Finland. And not only have they been doing this for more than five years now in terms of the meeting the electricity needs for the Helsinki International Horse Show, which is one of the FEI World Cup jumping qualifiers, which those of us that are horse folks know exactly what that is. But the powering for this horse show comes entirely from horse manure. So much horse manure that it is used to power the lights, scoreboards, and even charging stations for the fifth year in a row. And it was also had enough to sell back to the grid. And a fun fact, the manure produced daily by two horses can generate heat, and hopefully AC, for a single-family home for a year. And since the system was installed in 2015, around 70,000 tons of manure have been collected, providing heat in Finland gets cold to 1,250 customers and electricity to the National Power Grid. So some food for thought right there. And Mr. Browning, I look forward to having more conversation with you on things like this because I think that you really, you just seem like a visionary guy.
You can pull the, pull solar power into this as well.
Yes.
Where we are in our latitude, it's a freebie. And with some of the, some of the battery situations where you can retain the power, the energy now that you couldn't 10 years ago, or it just wasn't financially feasible, you're able to do it now. So that's something that, you know, this, this you might get a little pushback with the CO2, with the combusting manure. I spent a lot of time in Japan, and they do an awful lot with manure over there. However, you know, your heart's in the right place. I, you know, anything you can think up that works and stretches a buck and makes use of resources is tremendous, you know.
Yep, yep. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to Student Disciplinary Matters. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that Board Members have received the alternate placement list for students through October 6th, 2021. Ms. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion then to approve the expulsion of student JD 22-015E and JD 22-016E with educational services through the remainder of the 2021-2022 school year?
So moved.
Moved by, moved by Board Member Cummings, seconded by Board Member Campbell. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 22-017 without educational services through the remainder of the 2021-2022 school year?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair King. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, may I, I'd like to recover some of my minutes then because I was, Stanton and myself were addressed.
Actually, sir, I did just make a motion to adjourn, and that portion of the meeting is now over. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
They're moved.
Moved by Vice Chair King.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Cummings. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign?
Aye.
Motion passes four to, four votes to one. The meeting is adjourned at 7:25 p.m. Thank you.